I'd like to thank everyone for coming here this evening. Of course, I wish we had gathered under a little different circumstances. But we're going to go through some things tonight. Sheriff's going to be here to kind of go through some of the investigation. We're going to talk about some security issues and then go up with questions. But let's get started, let's do what we have to do. Mr. Chris, you said we follow more very thankful for the opportunities you've given us. We're thankful, Lord, for our community. Father, I'm thankful that our children. And I'm thankful that parents, community members care about the safety and the security of our children. We just ask that you just lead guys in the break our discussions tonight. That through it, Father, that we'll be able to help protect our kids even greater. And, Lord, just ask for blessings upon this time together. We give you all praise and honor and glory, as Christ has given praise. What I'd like to do is just, I do want to thank you for coming. I want to assure you that my staff's number one responsibility is the safety and security of our kids. That's the all loves number one. And I will share with you shortly, in a few minutes, a lot of the security things that we have done over the last two years. Things that we're currently doing, the things that we're planning on doing. But before we get into all that, I'd like to turn it over to our sheriff and let him just talk to you about the incident and some things going on there. I do want to thank our sheriff and the entire sheriff's office. We have a very relationship with the family of this officer. I can assure you that we get, as a school system, so many resources that most school systems never get from their sheriff. If we need an investigation, if we have something that's happening, we have the entire team of investigation units helping us. So, I mean, there's numerous times, at the right moment, and I'll share with you, one of the things we are going to do is we're going to go from, granting one more school resource officer, so that we have a school resource officer at every school. But until we get to that point, he's picking all that up through overtime in his own office. So, I mean, there's so many things that we get because of our relationship with each other that is a benefit to our students, our staff, and our community. So, on a personal note, I want to thank his office and him personally for his commitment for our school system and for us.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. And just want to add to what he said, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know it was a Thursday evening, but honestly, I can't think of anything that is any more important to us and our community and our children. I think that's why this situation is kind of taking us all by surprise and kind of got us all fired up, if you will, about what happened here last week. And, you know, after the incident happened, I was obviously taken back by what had happened. We actually have a sixth member in our school and it wandered the halls here for a few minutes. And we didn't know it until after we called him in. I watched as the office done the investigation and was very pleased that the arrest was made very quickly. We had this guy in custody and we had to do that arrest, hook added over to 2985 Camp Road. As the weekend progressed, it happened on Friday, as the weekend progressed, I like the community of you, different social media, I suppose, to read a lot of things that were being said. I really am not a fan of social media, but as sheriff, I think it's my job to monitor and see what's going on. And I read a lot of the posts that was out there, a lot of the concerns that probably a lot of you had. And I was very disturbed, not necessarily what you were saying, but what your concerns were and what did we fail to do to provide correct information as far as what happened? And what can we do to better, but how can we get the information out better? So, some of those concerns will be answered in a huge, quick way. But what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of go through and I want to give you exactly details as to what happened on Friday and go through this. And then we want to talk to you, like Carl said, about some issues and some things that we have done, some things that we identified from this incident, as well as some things that we've been working on for some time. Just to jump into this, on March 22nd, 2019, around 9:13 hours, Debra Childers, Debra Childers, if you raise your hand back. Debra Childers was assigned as our SRO here at Tate. Many of you know that she was at that time working between Tate and Harvey Ellington. Luckily, that particular day, she was assigned to work here at Tate. So, Debra Childers heard one of the boys here at Tate talking to someone directly outside of this auditorium next to the office area and asked what they were doing and asked them how they got in. This guy responded and said he was looking for a janitorial work and he had actually came in at the end of the hall next to the cafeteria as he pointed towards into the hallway down here. This employee actually escorted Mr. Daniel into the office where Debra Childers instructed him. He had to sign in as a guest and took his driver's license and made a copy of his driver's license. She went on to talk to him about what he was doing here at the school. Again, he said he was looking for janitorial work and he wanted to apply for a job. She explained to him that he'd been applying for a job here, that we contracted through ABM and how he needed to go about getting a job. After talking to him a short time, she and the other employee escorted him out of the building, but before doing so, had him show them where he had came into the building. So, they walked through the end of the hall next to the cafeteria, walked out towards the double doors and where he explained he walked through one of the doors. Debra Childers escorted him out of the building and then immediately looked at those doors to see how he got in. At that time, those doors were secure, they were not locked up, they were not ajar, they were secure. Debra Childers then goes back to her office. Something wasn't just adding up, you know, with this guy and how he had come in, walked into the office, why he didn't come into the front door. She said she just had a hunch, if you will, the way he was acting when he asked for a driver's license, something just wasn't right. So, she ran his license through our DCIC system that she has and he came back as a sex offender. Immediately notified Sergeant Shane Paget, who is in charge of SROs. Shane Paget, not only did she notify Shane Paget, but she also notified the assistant principal here at the school, Dale Spencer. Childers then conducted a walkthrough at the school to ensure that all the doors were locked and that there was nobody else inside the school that was not supposed to be here. Sergeant Paget, again, who is in charge of our SROs, of school resource officers, notified the rest of SROs throughout our school system, notified all the school administrators, our uniform patrol division, and our criminal investigators. Our number one center put out a blowout for be on the lookout for the vehicle that this guy was driving. The uniform patrol guy started to patrol in the area, looking, kind of checking around the school to make sure he was not in the area. Our detectives, a couple of them responded down here to the school, started the investigation. A couple of them stayed behind at the office, started running down the inside for this particular sex offender. At that time, we found that he was in fact on probation out of Cherokee County, that he was on probation for another sexual offense, beating Tom or something similar. Again, this happened around 9:30 at that time. By 10:30, our detectives had secured a walkthrough to state probation out of Cherokee County on for a probation violation. By 12 o'clock, our detectives had secured a warrant for Mr. Bruce Lee Daniel Jr., who was 57 years old, that we had found in this school for felony restrictions for a sex offender, which was for, basically, his violation was for lording in a place, a school for children. He was also charged with a burglary, where he entered this school with intent to commit a felony. And so, by 12:12 on Friday, we had secured both of those warrants in addition to the probation one. After reviewing the video, we found that Mr. Daniel arrived at the school and parked right in front of the school. He came up to the front doors of the school, he looked, kind of checked the front doors and found the door locked. At approximately 9:06, he walked down to the double doors located near the cafeteria. He then walked, found one of those doors ajar, he entered the building and walked down the hall. He had his hands in his pockets as he looked around, walking down the hall like he was kind of checking out the doors and the bathrooms as he walked down the hall. He ended up down in the gymnasium, all the way to the other end of the school. Sure, most of you know where that's at. As he gets down to the other end of the school, near the gym, he walks into the bathroom. If you've been out in that area, you've got a girls' bathroom and a boys' bathroom. He immediately walks into the girls' bathroom for just one second and then he walks back over to the boys' bathroom. And he stood in the boys' bathroom area with his back to the wall. One of the comments that were there over the weekend was, if there's no cameras in the bathroom, how do you know what he done? He actually stood in the, with his back to the wall and you could actually see, from the cameras in the hall, you could see his shoes. So, that's how we knew how he stood with his back to the wall in the bathroom. There was a couple of students in the bathroom. He stood there for, so the restroom, approximately 9:09. The video looks like he walked into the girls' restroom, then he goes to the boys', stands with his back to the wall. At approximately 9:10, two boys are in the room. Couple of seconds later, two other boys walk into the room. And approximately 9:11, Mr. Daniel leaves the restroom and walks back towards the front office. And he's looking around, kind of watching, keeping his head down as he walks down the hall. And as he approaches right here near the front offices, when he come in contact with one of the, one of the employees here at the school who says, "Sir, what are you doing?" As soon as she saw him, it was, "Sir, what are you doing?" And she did not know that he had just walked down this hall. She just seen him standing right there near the office area and immediately asking what he was doing and what business he had. Didn't want to know how he got into the school. So, I commend the, you know, the boy who immediately confronted him and asked him what he was doing. You know, she didn't take nothing off of him and was not going to allow him to do anything other than escort him into the office for Debra Childers to make sure that he checked in. So, a couple of other things, again, I know, again, just went off to some social media issues that I've read. It was talking about how the door was propped open, there was a lock in the door that had been left open. Debra Childers actually spoke with one of the teachers that I think was upstairs during this time. From the time that this guy came into the building, one of the teachers was working upstairs. He came out and went through that door. And she remembered as she was going through the door that the door was locked, it was not secured properly. She opened the door and noticed a piece of art that was caught in the doorway there, in the bottom of the door. The teacher told her that she pulled the part out through the way, closed the door, and it was secured. Sergeant Paget, after this incident had finished up and the guy was in jail, Paget went back and took a closer look at those video cameras and actually watched from about 7:15 that morning when the school buses started arriving. And y'all probably understand this more than I do, but the buses left, it gets off down here next to those two double doors. Those doors were propped open when the buses come in, those kids, those teachers standing there at those doors and those kids start coming in those double doors. And believe it or not, Paget was able to point out, it was a piece of art that was about this big. It was laying probably three or four feet away when those kids started coming in. And as all those kids start going through the door, that piece of art got kicked around to the point right before the last child entered the door, that mark was in, in the doorway. The teacher, as she made sure the last child was in, she walked over, grabbed the doors, pulls them to her, and just kind of secured it from the inside. So, again, the doors were not propped, they were not intentionally left open. Unfortunately, there was something in that door that was not allowed to be shut properly. So, that's kind of what happened with that. Again, currently, this Bruce Lee Daniel Jr. is incarcerated in the Pickens County Jail. He was, and we issued the warrants at 12:12 PM on Friday. He was arrested around 3:00 PM on Friday. I think originally reported to be arrested in at his home. Our detectives, because he was a sex offender, at Dawson County actually called him into the Dawson County Sheriff's Office for a review on his paperwork, if you will. And when he came in, he was taken into custody there at Dawson County Sheriff's Office. Our detective went over, met with him, took a custody at PM, called him over to Pickens County Jail where he was interviewed for about some time to give his story as to what happened. He, I will tell you, he admitted that he was not here looking for a job, he had another story. I can't really go into detail about what his story was, but I will tell you that we're very fortunate that we got this guy to do, this is a guy that we do not want to have in our community. We do not want him in our schools or anywhere around our children. And very, very unfortunate what happened. And Childers not, and failing, something wasn't right and ran him. There's no telling what could have happened later on, there's no telling what this guy would have done later on. This guy has extensive criminal history. So, you know, the thing I want to do is point out that I am thankful that we have a board of education that takes our security of our children serious. Because when I started 10 years ago, we had two campus police officers. Because of operation, not only this administration of board of education, but over the years, we now have six SROs in our schools. And after this incident, we're going to have seven. We'll have one in each of our schools, including two at the high school. But again, because of the staff at this school being vigilant and seeing this guy standing in the hall and this Debra Childers paying attention, and no one took what right and pulled the trigger, making sure that she ran this guy and took it serious, we've got a sex offender or what may be a predator off the street away from our children. Had she not, we would not be standing here today, because I would have known what happened. So, again, I hate that it happened. And again, like Carl said, we take our schools and the safety of our children very serious. We are going to do everything we can to make sure that this doesn't happen again. You know, just last year or so, we have spent a lot of time working with our schools. And with active shooters, I know you guys have seen the same thing I've seen across the country over the last several years. Active shooters has been a huge topic. And I hope to pray that that's something we don't have to deal with. For the first time in my history for this county in 24 years, every single law enforcement officer in this county has the same active shooter training. Every law, not just the sheriff's office, the city, the state control, probation, parole, everybody trains together and they work together. Let me go further, we had gotten into school session and we worked with every teacher and every administrator in every school to work with the active shooter, active attack. And taking that further, before this incident happened, we had already planned on going into every classroom, meeting with every teacher about what we can do to help secure our schools. That started this week with Coach Parker and with my chief deputy going to talk to every single people one-on-one on what we can do. And it's not just my job as sheriff or the SRO's job is the duty assigned to those schools to help secure those doors and those schools. We all have to work together, whether you're a teacher or you're a parent or any student. Guys, we've got to work together to make sure that these schools are as safe as we can make them. So, without getting off on something, Carl will tell you a little more about what we've done to secure. Okay, one thing that, another thing, and Dr. Wilson reminded me, one other thing that I read was why we did not notify the parents or why you guys didn't get notified quick enough. I will tell you, on behalf of the sheriff's office, I cannot send out information immediately because of our investigation. I know the school, they're going to notify you guys. I know they sent out information early on, very limited information. We did not share a lot of information on this situation with Dr. Wilson or with the school other than the fact that it was a sex offender on campus. So, when you receive certain information from the school and then later that afternoon, you've got a lot more information that went out through the progress and the findings and fetching news and some of these other media outlets. It was not, because they were trying to hold information, we didn't get it. Let me tell you why, is, again, when something like this happens, our first and foremost, we are focused on the safety of the students and once we make sure that's taken care of, the next thing we've got to do is go get the facts out. We've got to make sure that we get, in this case, we got the sex offender. And if we put information out to y'all, and again, no disrespect, in social media, and then it gets back to the guy that we're looking for. This guy, he is facing, based on his sex offender violation, he's facing 30 years in prison. He's facing another, you know, one, five, 10 years based on his burglary charge. So, you know, 30 to 40 years, if he knows that we're looking for him and he knows the story that was told, guys, he's not going to be there, it's going to make our job, 10 times worse to try to catch him. So, we purposely do not release much information and we will keep that to a minimum. So, I know it's tough, and again, as a parent, I want to know what's going on sometimes. Guys, you've just got to give us a little time. And I know it's a tough call. I know Dr. Wilson sent out, you guys got some information out there. But as quick as we got this guy in custody, as quick as we got a good interview and we got out, we're going to get out of him. Dr. Wilson and I are sitting in the office together, we got something written up and we released it. You know, and we still have a couple of breakdowns, we did. And again, I apologize for that. But, you know, there's nothing intentional. We're both parents, we know how important it is to get that information out. And I can tell you, I've seen Dr. Wilson send out information, and I've said our same, you know, the whole life. And it ain't, I've got to give you that. So, you know, it's a tough call, but again, the reason you've got very limited information is because of the investigation and we just can't, we just can't release it. You know, another thing I've heard is, I know we've had a couple of record requests for the video. You know, I had a conversation with our district attorney about releasing the video on this guy walking the halls. And that was a decision that Allison and others, we are left to DA discuss. Because of the severity of this case, that's just something that, you know, we feel we don't need to release at this time. You know, our, again, it's not out of pity, but if you guys, nothing here while I can release it. You know, less than a violation case, in a no case, this is so much different. And we just do not subject files, have any issues with this case, stop. So, you know, I hope you guys will understand.
Thanks, Sheriff. Just a couple of things, I'd like to go over with some of the things that we have done the last two years, things that we're currently doing and things that we plan on doing as far as safety and security of our students. First off, we have to, and I know I've got several volunteers to come in and do some security and safety audits throughout our entire campuses, we constantly do that every year. And we've already completed a comprehensive assessment of our school system. So, that's something that we do every year. Two years ago, we had four school resource officers. As of this year began, this year, we're up to six. And then going forward, we're going to have seven. We've also, because of school safety and security is such an important issue with us, we've assigned Coach Parker, that is, he's still over as the athletic director for the district, but then his main area concern is school safety and school security. So, we make sure that we have somebody specifically over that area. We've spent $360,000 to use security cameras and updates to that system. We've spent $1.2 million in classroom cameras and emergency notification systems. We've got a complete new digital radio communication system on all of our buses in all of our schools. High school record is 911. And also the law enforcement, it also has GPS tracking on all of our buses. We have 55 new handheld radios for our schools and actually in our school. We have completed new fixing on several of our campuses and will also do more new fixing coming up. We want to make sure that every area of our schools is secure. We've added safety vestibles in several of our schools and we're looking at adding one here also at Tate so that when you come into the doors, you still do not have access to the school without going through the halls first. We have added a welcome center at the high school. Really, it's a guard shack, but, social media killed me on guard shack. And I changed it to a welcome center, no waste of a word. So, we have a welcome center at the high school. And I will say, the first week that we had that welcome center, we had 17 vehicles turn around and decide not to come down to the school. Like they were there for, but they turned around and left. We're also adding card readers on all campuses where we have access to ID cards. And it makes the key process a lot easier, but also we can get with locked down doors and we can also tell if those are the doors and things such as that. We've added, we, at the high school, we had a couple of classes that were outside the main building. The one that had travel photos was our weight training class. It was down at the farmhouse, at the beginning of school year, we brought that in-house. We redid an area and we had a new weight room in the main building. The only class that now goes outside at the high school is our anchor apartment. They go to the barn or to the greenhouse. We just can't bring the barn inside. So, they go outside with assistance of a teacher. But all of the other buildings and everything else, they're brought inside the main building itself. We also were relocated baseball, softball complex to the high school. We're also relocated across country to the high school. We want to make sure that as most of our sports, our kids do not have to leave our campus. We go practice or participate in home events. Now, I will say, there are three sports that will have to leave our campus. We're not building a swimming pool for the swimming team. We're not building a golf course for the golf team. And we're not building a bass lake for our bass fishing team. So, those three teams still have to leave our campus. But everyone else should stay on our campus and that way I can ensure that they stay safe. We do have a committee that we started about a year ago and it consists of the sheriff, fire, EMS, 911, Jasper, Piggity, and school system. We've met several times already specifically about school security and safety and training. And we already met several times, we meet consistently and regularly to upgrade our system and talk about training. We've got very involved, just like the sheriff said, in active shooter and intruder training. And I just want to reemphasize, every law enforcement officer in Pickens County has been trained, they've been trained in the schools, not in theory or anything else, but actually walking the halls of our school. So, they're there and they're trained. We've trained all of our staff on intruder, active shooter. And then we also have And then we also have, uh, Coach Parker and Chief Hall going to every teacher's classroom, going over what to do if there's an emergency or an intruder. We have been and will continue to run background checks on all volunteers that we have within our school system. Uh, we've also, uh, I know Sheriff and I both have attended active shooter incident management training. We've, uh, the sheriff has sent, uh, his chief, uh, deputy, uh, Chief Hall to train the trainer, so we can start doing some training in-house a lot. All of our staff has also, or most of our staff has been taught, uh, stop and leave, which is a critical part of that, some of the things that we're continuing to do, all of those. We are looking at, we're fixing on several of our campuses, we're looking at door monitoring software. We're also looking at some software where any employee in the school system can emergency lockdown that school without going through an office, with any kind of a phone call or anything else. So, it would be immediate lockdown, and, uh, every staff member will have that capability to do so. We're also looking at adding a safety vest to view here, and we, not even all the schools, we don't have the software, but we will shortly have a software to be able to run license checks for all of our visitors as they come into all of our schools. Those are some of the things that we are doing, we're constantly looking at, we think that come out, anything that can help our schools, our school system, to make sure we're safe. But the number one thing is our staff. And it's our staff that has to take the responsibility to make sure that the door is closed, and our staff has to take, make sure the responsibility that everyone has a badge that's on the inside of the building. So, as parents, if you come into the school, don't be offended if they ask you, where's your badge? Or make sure you go to the car and get your license. Uh, I know that we hit to the point, a lot of times, everybody knows everybody and all that good stuff, but we still need to run those licenses, and we still need to put them on our system. So, if, if we continue to improve, and we do take every incident, it's pretty serious, and every time there's anything, whether it's a drill, a practice, or something that happened like it did here last week, we will take that, and we'll look at every part of it, and see what worked, what didn't work, and what can we improve on. If I have any questions? Yes, sir.
Oh, I wanna try to be constructive here. Uh, I took my son to Walmart a couple nights ago, and there's a door on the side of the Walmart that's got this bar on it that's got an alarm. He is barely brushed up against that bar, and the Walmart alarm system in the entire store starts going off. So, but, so I'm trying to understand, you're saying that these doors down here, there is no way to tell that they were a jar, that all this was defeated by a piece of bark, and we don't have any way to have an alarm system on, on those doors like they do at the Walmarts all across the country? I, it, it is, I-
Well, similar to what's in the jail. The jail will let you know if there's a door open.
Or how your kid's gonna get the door.
One of the things, now, one, one of the things that have on this is some monitoring software.
I, I, I understand, but why do we need software? I mean, Walmart's got an alarm, and you could, I'm embarrassed to death. I, you know, it's hard, I was sitting there, I was talking to my face, because the alarm's going off all across the store.
One of the things, and, and we're looking at its location, but, for instance, well, that particular door has been used by students going to the playground every day.
Right, but you can turn it off at a certain time and then turn it back on.
And you're gonna send five hundred kids walking down the hall, barely both of it?
We, we're, we're going, we're, we're looking at alarm doors, and we're looking at the software also. And when I say software, it doesn't mean that it doesn't have an alarm. It, we, we, that is one of the things that we are looking at and hoping to-
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, if, if we have to put up with five hundred kids walking past, it's a lot better than one person walking in here that has bad intent. And maybe it would take a hundred and five seconds.
Guys, we are, we are, I can promise you, we're looking into that, like, we definitely not had it. Uh, but it is something that is on our list, we've actually, uh, looked at with something, and we've got something scheduled to come in. So, we're about to have, and that is one of them, yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a question, how come it wasn't on lockdown? Like, at what point did y'all think that someone wasn't there working with him?
We're always in a soft lockdown, and when you say lockdown, what, I mean-
Like, I just mean like a lockdown, I never heard that the school was in a lockdown. Normally, whenever a lockdown is released, that's typical on a lockdown.
We, we were, we're, we're always, every, every school is always in a soft lockdown. And what that means there is that all the exterior doors are always supposed to be locked all the time, and, uh-
But at that point, you're not going without going to the playground?
But that was only after the fact that we made sure that that, uh, person was no longer on campus or near this campus. Uh, that was immediately, uh, noted by our school resource officers, that, uh, when we saw the camera that he left the area, then there was, there was no need to lock down the school as a total lockdown, but we did, we're always in a soft lockdown. Yes, ma'am.
Would the parents of the children have walked in without him, noticed him?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
This is my concern, and, uh, help me understand this. This man got through a door that was a yard by far, from one end of the school to the other end of the school, without being seen, but without being stopped. Who is monitoring the cameras? This man, anything can happen in five minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
And we all seen what's gone out throughout the country in schools. And I'm thankful that it didn't happen here, but from the time he walked in that door, he got to the other end of the school without being stopped. Who is monitoring the cameras? That's what's upset me.
We, we do not have one person that constantly monitors the camera all day.
The camera?
Then what's going on?
Cause my thing is, is that he could've had somebody else with him, and would not have done it till y'all found him, got his license, and he left. He could've had somebody else with him, y'all would not have done that if he looked at the camera because he was caught, okay? He could've had a device on him, and, I mean, I'm glad none of this happened, but my concern is, we're used to the cameras, if we're not monitoring, we don't know we have a threat. Because my son, you said, they, they were not on lockdown.
We're, we're always in lockdown, we, when we, if we, if there's a intruder in the school, or right here at it, and we, we already determined that he was gone, then we did lock down the entire school. And we don't let the kids out of the classrooms or anything like that. Uh, but it was determined that the, it was determined at that point that, uh, he was off campus and was not a threat to any of our students inside the school here.
What time was that? Sorry, what time was that, y'all determine that?
Well, as soon as we saw him leave, public campus area.
But there was a point where the kids were not allowed to go to the special classes or anything like that, that they were completely in their classrooms here?
No.
Why would they be allowed?
Why would they be allowed to leave here?
He, at, at the moment that he was allowed to leave, we did not know that he was here. It was-
This young lady should've took him into custody and called the sheriff.
If she had that unheeded, give a pill.
Exactly.
Well, but-
That could be a meeting.
Why are we, why do we have a policy of walking around the school and checking the doors after all the kids arrive?
We are, and we did, we are.
Well, you did that morning?
No, we did not.
Monday morning, the door up the lower building down here was open? It was open this morning.
And we let drop, let the parents and students drop off out here.
Is that gonna be the excuse for national news when you're burying your underkids?
Y'all, I can, I can lock this school down, and I can make it the safest school in the entire nation. And in doing so, we can have one door, and the only ones that come through the door are students. And then I can lock it down where no parent comes into this building.
That's good.
And I mean, for no reason at all. Now, I don't think parents want that, because we're only part of the educational process. We could be the most welcoming school in the entire nation, and have our doors wide open and let everybody come in, and nobody goes that night. It's a continual line there between what is the safest, but also welcoming for parents into the school, and there's a fine line, and, and we teeter across that line sometimes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, the parents of the children who were in the bathroom when it was registered type of incident, at what point did y'all question those children about what had happened?
It was very quickly, uh, I-
And y'all, y'all thought it was appropriate to do that without the parents?
To ask them a couple of questions, yes, ma'am.
And why were those parents not notified until seven o'clock that night?
They, they shouldn't have known, I don't-
Yeah, what safety-
Yes, ma'am, they shouldn't have known, I don't, and, and I had more responsibility for that.
And that's great, I'm glad you picked a spot, because I'm the mother of one of those children.
I'm saying, I apologize for that.
And so, we have no explanation as to why that was okay? So, why were the parents not notified before the press release? I understand y'all don't want social media going crazy. Four parents should've been notified.
Yes, ma'am, you're exactly right, and I apologize, I apologize for that happening. And, uh, I had those teeth, and I apologize for that happening, and I am sorry.
The sheriffs did not interview these children until yesterday and today. Y'all have had like four press releases come out saying that you have all interviewed these children, and nothing has happened, and nothing's happened. How do y'all know that you didn't interview those kids in the correct?
Mr., Mr. Park Minister talked to them, and talked them right, and then it happened.
And he was training on how to interview children, and the possibility that something this bad has happened to them?
It was big upon what they said, it was dependent on the extent of the investigation, but they're talking to them, felt comfortable that absolutely nothing happened, and comfortable that, uh, that they were perfectly safe. And, and I apologize for not going that way.
I, I just, yeah, again, I, I know, I know this could get heated, but to answer your question about the continuum of security, when I go to Hill City, I go in the office, I go in one door, one door only, I go in the office, I get a badge every time. Unless somebody has a key, that is the security, I, I want every coming, one door, go into the office, get a badge. If you're not an employee here, you don't have the key to any of the other doors, no other doors, one door for anybody that does not belong here. That, I think that's, is, I, that continuum of, of level of security, is that reasonable?
Yes, it is.
But my question still hasn't been answered. This man got in the door up here, got down here, and was-
Was able to stand there?
They were standing there.
Three minutes before anybody noticed it.
So, is there not hall monitoring? Anything could've happened from one end of the building to the other end of the building. How did this get missed? That's what I would like to know, how did this get missed? Because my son saw this man on the news, and he saw this man in the school that day, and the sheer terror of what he listened to on the news, with me sitting there with him, the look in his face, I will never forget. And I don't wanna lose my son to any school violence, or someone coming in here doing something that they either is physically hurting him or mentally hurting him. So, I've contacted, he had these four children. So, I wanna know how this man got from one end to the other end without being detected by anyone?
We have not had the personnel to monitor this hall. Now, uh, yeah, I, I would be wide open for Colonel Ellen, volunteers, to help monitor the hall, or to monitor the, uh, video cameras the entire time. Uh, I, you know, if anybody wants to help us with that, uh, you know, help us to make our school safe, absolutely. Uh, but we have not had the personnel dedicated only for that purpose. Uh, he made it that far because most of the kids and teachers and staff were in classrooms during that time period, they were not out in the hall.
I think the only way to, uh, to fix what you're talking about would be similar to what we're doing at the jail and at the courthouse. We have what's called a central control, we have one person dedicated, and we use the courthouse, for instance. At the courthouse, when you come in, anybody coming in illegally in any door, any area, we have one person watching all the cameras all the time. Those doors are open at the courthouse, I have a guy running what's called a central control. He's watching the doors, he's watching all the cameras, and watching all the movement. And the other way, I think, uh, Carlton would need to have an area set aside, so we have a dedicated person watching this. Watching those cameras.
I think that's worth our taxpayer money to do that, keep our children safe, if we're gonna have all the technology.
Maybe we're not acquired, certified, or we could hire a civilian person, and again, we do the same thing at the courthouse. We, we do some, we do a lot of those.
I, and I, and one thing, I, I, I respect that you're trying to, when you're being involved, but even that, we have to, then the parents and volunteer have to go through a background check, right? And, and, but, but tell me, sir, Officer, uh, Sheriff, you would know, how often are those side doors with the alarms at Walmart getting defeated?
I would be worried at Walmart, but it is not that often, I would be, I mean, you know, if you hit an alarm, like you said, it's just one alarm.
I, I, yeah, I, I, it is so simple. I, it doesn't require computer programming or anything, I, it, it, it is like a fire alarm, it needs sort of, it is designed to get everybody's attention, whether it's a theater, a restaurant, a, a retail center, whatever it is, you're trying to get everybody's attention to this entire building, and also there's an alarm on the door.
But if a bar had been locked in that door, then the alarm wouldn't have gone off.
If it's a bar, it's a way that no one's going to-
Anything can fail. It would all be one.
I can tell you, I remember, you know, I'm gonna go back probably four years ago, we done the security assessment. Uh, we went into, uh, several schools, several doors were open, they, you know, they had all kinds of danger. At the high school, for instance, I mean, I can remember when we could walk in any door, the back, behind the high school, you could go around, you go in any door, anywhere. And I know we still have issues, but as a community, we still ain't good enough. I get that there has been a lot, a lot of security measures put in place, we've come a long way. Are we there yet? Absolutely not. Uh, but again, I think if we can work together and figure out a way to, uh, develop, and we talked about it at the high school, if we can develop, uh, a central control area in these schools, you know, Carlton has already thought about adding the cameras in all these classrooms, you know, where if something happens, not only can the schools and the SROs see what's going on in the classroom if you add an issue, uh, our deputies now have the computers in the cars that will be able eventually to see what's going on, maybe, um, you know, have those central controls set up so we can monitor some of those options and see what's happening.
Sheriff, if you would indulge, now I have two more questions, one for each one of you. You're under contract with Lord of Education, with so much monetary value, you provide security to our school campuses, correct?
We provide, yes, we have a contract with the school to provide-
Then you're sorry, can you let us know how much the contract is worth?
We provide, right now, six SROs to the school. They reimburse us for seventy percent of five of those, we fund one hundred percent of number six. Uh, we have an discussion, we're gonna be on the seventh, certainly as evening tomorrow, we'll pay overtime, make sure that other schools start.
Now, Dr. Wilson, you had mentioned that this door down here is a must on intake and outtake of students and staff here, correct? I mean, you're agreeing with me?
Yeah, this point is maybe the patch, yes.
So, if this door and that door is not visible between each other, how could that female deputy secure that entrance? There needs to be two deputies, or that door needs to be closed. If you can convince me otherwise, I'm all ears.
I don't think it necessarily has to be a deputy, I think if you've got somebody in the ward who's, there's those kids that are coming in, to make sure who's coming in and who's coming out, that can help monitor that, whether it be a teacher or somebody.
We did it, and we have staff or faculty, and carwrecked it.
Unarmed, defensive staff.
Uh, yes, yes.
Now, what would be the reality of having some armed school staff here, say the principal, the vice principal, what would it take to get that done?
We've absolutely been discussing that for-
Yeah, that is a strong possibility, very good. Yes, ma'am.
Um, my, I, my daughter is senior, I have three kids, so I've been here for a long time, each one went to this school, and this is Tina. Um, this is Tina. There's been many times I have walked down these halls and I have faced someone, or it's not a teacher, hey, how are you and how you doing? Going back to her question, how did not one person, you get from one end to the other end, but not one person being suspicious? I mean, that should have been, you know, someone should have asked, hey, there's a guy walking down the hall, is that a visitor? Because, you know, you know when you have visitors in lunchtime or special events, I mean, have you not rec, you know, actually that's suspicious? But I understand going forward, it takes, it takes community to build that, to reach. And I hope that our teachers take this more serious now. And it takes the whole school, it takes the whole staff, it takes the whole, all the parents to make this work. But that's, that's just quite my corner, but that's, that's really upset me. And I have walked these halls many times, legally, with a visitor pass. And I'm not, I, there's not one time I walk in a hall and I see someone.
Of course, this one, you said, we have to do that.
Do what now?
We have to do that. I mean, how he made it all the way down there, right in front of...
He must have been frightened because I need to make it down there in five minutes.
He was in the car.
He was sitting on pretty good, especially on his way up.
He's a professional criminal.
Obviously, out of the head.
You know, that's his job, to be able to sneak around and do this kind of stuff.
And that's true behind you, who's looking in hot in the classroom.
Sure. Could you indulge me with, if parents want volunteers, if they have past misdemeanor convictions, what would disqualify anybody in our community from volunteering to be on campus and help our school?
Of course, both ways, anything that'd be domestic violence, drug usage, any kind of violent crime at all. If it's a minor misdemeanor, we would look at each one of those individually. If there was a bad check or something like that, that, you know, that, we might, that weren't the luxury of the money, but those are... But it could depend on what the circumstances were.
Well, I'm being serious. I work here in town, in real close to the school, and I've put several of my kids through the house. And I have nothing but the utmost respect for the teachers and the administration and everything. I don't want to get up, give up my hour of lunchtime to come up here and say, you want cameras?
I would love to have every parent that could volunteer into school because it does a couple of things. Not only does it make our school safer, but it also sends a message to all the kids that parents take education very serious. And we will never be the school system that you or I wanted to be unless parents are involved. And that's...
And it's going to send a message to the rest of the community that we care about what we're doing and where we get involved. Absolutely.
Well, can you send out a memo or something to make it that they hear from the parents who do work here in town, that have to maintain jobs? If they want to volunteer to watch the cameras for thirty minutes, for an hour, or however long that they can, so that they can do so without having a lot of cooks to joke for you?
Oh, we will.
Be here quicker for our children's safety.
Absolutely. What we will do is we'll set up a couple of parent meetings. We'll have one at the evening, one in the morning, so that in the calm days, times, we'll do that through Destiny. We'll send out that notice and we'll get it in all the media, social medias, because that contains what we're really doing. And then we'll come in and lay out the entire program.
How about a sixth or seventh year, when they're...
And so, of course, my parents.
We can run a Walmart.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. We would love to. We'll do that after spring break.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Friday, Wednesday, was there an SOP or a policy for handling, and I explained this or if in the schools, for the SOP? Was there, did you guys have something laying out already, how to...
Specifically changing, I miss something there. I don't know that it specifically addresses that particular incident.
I mean, was there an SOP for unexplained visitors? There is one. What is that called? So by letting them go, that was followed to the SOP.
Well, again, I will remind you that when we let him go, he was still, and we, that moment had no doubt that he was possibly here as an applicant for a custodial job. Now, y'all also notice we have a sign right outside the door now where we're hiring substitute teachers through ESS.
That is not even, that's not even, that's not even, it's like a wrong completely. That sign needs to be taken in.
There was a...
ESS is wrong?
That's ESS.
No, it's not.
That's, we, that's our...
That's not like a substitute teacher.
It is.
Yes.
Yes.
But it's not in Biggs County, at this time.
We, we use ESS for our staff. We sell that weekly.
They're not hiring right now.
I'm sorry?
They're not hiring right now.
No.
There's nothing on there.
Uh, well, then we need to say that's not it. You know, we're only hiring for Biggs County. But what I'm saying, though, he, you know, we do have people come in to our schools and ask about custodial jobs. And at that moment, that's what it appeared, and it just felt a little wrong. We didn't have anything to the contrary at that moment until, and then he left. So, I mean, we didn't know.
What was the timeframe between taking the photocopy of his ID and the actual call and to run his information? How long of a time?
That I don't know. But to go back to the first part of your question, I don't think empty children knew that he, she did not know he was on the campus and had wandered down the hall. All she knew was that an employee had confronted him and said, hey, what are you doing? And he had, he had just came in and was looking for a job. So when she escorted him into the office, she had him sign in, she talked to him about this so- 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 job, and then took his information.
Is there an expiration on the opening? I've made one for me that I would like to see here. I was told about the district attorney thing. Once the investigation is over, do I have to re-submit that request? Or does this one that I've already submitted, is it the same?
I'm sure it'll stand, but we'll just have to figure out, it may be a while on the investigation and when it goes to trial. The big issue is we don't get this video out of social media and out to the public before this case goes to trial.
Sheriff, is there any way you yourself can change SOP?
For the sheriff's office?
Yes, or our regional office. Can we change it to where if you are caught on campus circumventing security, you are immediately detained? There is no question, there is no letting go. If you don't go through the right channels and come through the front door, you will be detained until you yourself says let it go.
Schools are a target issue.
Absolutely. I can change the policy to say if we find somebody on campus that has not followed the protocol, then we can detain them until we verify what they're doing and where they come.
It's fine.
That's something we will have to do.
All right, I waited a long time. I've got one more thing. Friday, a man named Tony told me at the organization that it was popped up through the door.
That what?
That the door was popped up through the door.
That was, that was the first thing that we wanted to report and say.
I'm going to punish Ms. Hall, who I am absolutely, completely supportive of amongst that with her, not except with anybody in this school, unless somebody did it. Ms. Hall told me that there were maintenance issues and that she was here the whole weekend trying to get fixed. And now we're told there was a piece of bar.
I'm not supposed to tell any organization. I'm not aware of those issues. All I know of is the video that I've watched, the change here with me, about the bar being in the door. And I'm also talking with empty children, who spoke with the picture that says she removed a piece of bar.
And looking at the video, it starts without, through a sort of pad, and it appeared the door just did not close properly. And we assumed at that moment that it was the hydraulics on the door. And that is the reason we assumed that it did not close the way it should have closed because we didn't notice that little piece of bar that had gotten in there. So at that point, it was a mechanical malfunction is what we assumed it to be until we verified that it was not. Yes, sir?
Yes, I was wondering if y'all thought about y'all's early program in the gym. How many teachers do you know that were watching the kids in the morning? Because the door was wide open when you...
Same after school. That was changed when I went to pull up Riley, like at five thirty, the door was locked. She was looking for me and letting me in. Because I opened the door and she's like, oh, it's locked, I'm, I'm gonna let y'all in. So it was locked at seven.
I was saying in the morning, in the morning, the doors in the gym for some kids who had dropped off early, they had the door wide open, there's a hundred kids there. And I just ended, I just ended up, the teachers could watch everybody, you know, without people, someone being at the front, watching that door. When I came out there, there wasn't even a teacher out there, so.
Mr. Wilson?
When was that?
When I first brought my daughter here, current lead of school, and then I started getting on the bus. But I just ended up, it's changed since then.
You could have an active shooter come in in the morning, hide in the building, in the janitor's office, or up under a desk, or whatever, and wait for all the parents and the students to do what they're going to do? Come out and open up? We've seen it happen in our country before.
I'm just saying because, you know, you know, when I first brought my daughter here, I couldn't let anybody walk right into the school and, you know, that door is wide open in the morning.
I've got to go with this exchange.
In all schools.
There is also a huge problem with the gate down there. That gate needs to be reconstructed. And what I've seen is people leave the gate open because it's such a pain in the butt to go in there with the hole the way it is. That whole part of the fence needs to be reconstructed.
We were looking at all the cases here.
So y'all, are y'all gonna, do you have anything about that, the door being wide open in the morning after, what's going on?
Absolutely.
In the morning, the morning in the gym?
Yeah.
I didn't see the death, we, we're not sure.
And I can assure you that when anything like this occurs, like I said earlier, whether it's a drill or something real life like this occurred, we, we do totally do everything and reevaluate everything. And from that, we have changed. And the good thing is that from this, we will make a number of changes and become more secure and more vigilant on making sure security is top priority.
I wonder, can you give us a timeline, like at least two weeks out, you will release your report on your, on what you learned tonight from this meeting and, you know, course of action? I just want to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks, right? Can we get a timeline on this?
Well, obviously it's not a meal or not, it's gonna take some time.
That's what I said, a couple of weeks from now, I mean, you'll digest it.
I never take a spring break off, if you don't mind. But as of that, then yes. And I have, I, you know, I'll own a free, come channel superintendent meetings around here. And last time, I think I had maybe ten people show up. But, you know, at any point, you don't have to wait very long. Come on, let's talk about it, ask, what are we saying on this? If you don't see something happen, come, come see, call. But yes, I'll give a timeline out for it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, first of all, if you heard all of you, before you ask the question, think about what's already been answered. Because I feel like we're talking the same thing over. And I want to say this, in nineteen ninety-seven, I walked my little boy through those doors for the first time. Because of the difference in age of my children, last year was my last year. I was a tape tanger for twenty years, twenty years longer than anybody else who's ever been a tape tanger. And I'm proud of it. I'm still a tanger. You were here with me. Yes, you were here with me. But let me say this, after September eleventh, two thousand and one, I was not able to walk through that front door, even though I went to church with the people in the office, and I still call most of the people who were here then and now, my friends. I could not walk through that door without being stopped, directed to the office, and given a name tag. So for this false sense of abandonment on their part, let me just say, these people here in this school have done their job. This is one incident, and yes, it should not happen, but I feel confident that the steps that are being taken today will prevent that from happening again. But, and I said all that to say this, and I'm not better than anybody, I'm the least of anybody, but let me say this, we, Monica and I, have been to every school meeting, every time I'm meeting this year, I've seen none you better. Destiny, Destiny, will you raise your hand up? She has reached out through social media, through phone messages, and through every type of media imaginable, begging tangers to come and have their voices heard. If security has been one of your concerns, it shouldn't have taken a sex offender walking through these doors and making their way down the hall.
You know, there was somebody on the tire.
This is something, hold it.
Let me, let me just say, and I promise, I'm not saying this is part of, no, I'm telling you I'm tired too. When they said that they were in the room with four students, my heart sank. That is inexcusable. It is. But like I said, we're revisiting the same things over and over. Our, the sheriff that came, he showed today or yesterday was his birthday. He's here with us to, to talk this out. And there's a difference between talking and complaining. If we won't resolve, we have to come, come to this together. I mean, and I know, and I've been there, I've been a single mom, I went and came to every meeting that I was willing to come to, I understand it. But find a mom or an aunt who's required to go and there's been. Destiny, when is our next meeting, the fourteenth?
Fifteenth.
I'm next, Sam, sorry. I believe it's, uh...
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth. If all of you would show up to that, that would be fantastic. Because I, I promise you, once you hear what's going on with those smaller meetings, you'll, you'll feel more than about, about when things like this happen. You'll know that people who are taking care of your children when you're not there. And I know as a mom, to me, that's the most important thing. My daughter has to give everybody she sees a time to hug them because they make her feel like family, and to me, that's important. And I can promise you this, I don't know, I don't know anything that happened in her body as far as the names or whatever, but I can assure you, if one of those children had been harmed in any way, that may would have made it out, don't worry. It would not have made it out.
You can't guarantee that. Yeah, you can't really.
And they really cared about those children. I don't even know if I had a force staff like that.
And it's happened, and like I said, it's happened, it's awful. And I'm the greatest, I want to make sure it never happens again. And you had the best idea that was, one door, one way in, one way out, and it should be that way.
It's simple security, the jails that way.
Exactly. And it's great to do that, and I think that's making, the fact that you said we're going to change that right now, if somebody comes in and they don't have that visitor pass, call them and go and find out all their, that's all I was going to say. Problem solved. Can we go back and change what happened Friday? No, we wish we could, but let's look at it this way, too. This has been a learning experience. Without that happening, we all would be here together, coming up with proposals to make sure that it happens again.
I agree. Yes, sir.
This is good. I had a double mine grand time going out of jail. This is something we, Dr. Wilson, we've talked about. Some of you know, some of you, some of you have taken notes, maybe. I've had this discussion with Dr. Wilson, this is a topic that's very near and dear to me. I was a kidnapped kid from the school in nineteen eighty. And I want to tell you, thank you. We, we, we're from Blackstone, but they already done. I was taken, shanked out of school by somebody that should have never checked me out. So from there till now, you can't get your kid unless you're on the list. You can't just come and get them. They may fight against that, they're up against that. The progress has been made already, I thank you. The incidents that took place, I hate them. Trust me, it's in my guts. Because I was a molester as a child. I know what this is. This incident's bad, but I can tell you they're on it. I can tell you that it's took... I can tell you that it's took their sleep, it's took their home, their family life, it's took it apart. Because now they're having to fight something because they had to, they had to get out. I tell you right now, it's not for utmost intention. And they're gonna fight every way they can to fix it. And either we can support these men and these deputies, or we can crucify them. I will support them. I'm gonna back them. I've got four children, two of them, one of them is good for this school, one of them is currently in this school. And I can tell you for a fact, yes, I will apologize for what happened. But I can tell you now, if we can holler in line and just pull the fingers, but it has, nothing happened. Now, thank Almighty God that nothing is happening. Respectfully. My prayers are held in this school. Has been done. Your prayers have been preached around the school. Because I owe you an apology. If you think that I have crucified you tonight, I apologize. Do you think you've been crucified tonight? Wait, wait. I would say, you know, it's easy, I sit here, I pastor a church. And it's just, it's easy for me to sit here and interrupt, and interrupt, and interrupt. But I raise my hands up here and hold it up in the morning, I'm changing it again. You know, I was told a thing that, listen, I respect what y'all do. I respect the hours that you put in. I respect the privacy. Sheriff, that you have, the obligation, the responsibility that you have. I respect it. I see your deputies, I always thank them for what they do for our children. Day in and day out, putting their lives on the line for us, for a whole lot of this money that I would do it for, and I thank you. But I can tell you this, and listen, this will take every one of us in here. Y'all, these parents, listen, I don't know these teachers, I know them. I didn't know this hall. I send my children in faith, believe they're gonna take care of them.
Amen.
I do. I send them in faith, believe they're gonna take care of them. I've got in here, and I've got involved. I walk in this school, every teacher in here knows me. They know my wife, and they put you out of capture. And they keep my wife up, they there for us and our family. But I will tell you this, these teachers are very diligent in what they do. This incident, one incident does not define this county, this administration, or this school. They are proud of what they do, they work hard at what they do. None of them should be fired. What this will do is what it did for me. It got people to set laws in place to protect children like me. And I'm glad to know that, you know what, you're gonna handle this. And I've talked to you, and you, and we've talked before. And I look forward to what's coming. Because one, because this happened, this bad thing happened, trust me. But I'll tell you this, I look forward to what's gonna happen. I look forward to what's gonna happen because I know that they're gonna fix it. I ask you to be careful. Let's support. I'll volunteer, I work third shift. I work a third shift, not get off in the daytime. I can give up, I can give up going home, going to bed, if I'm up here. To be a part of this children's life. Because you know what, I want to be an example in front of all children. To tell them, I don't know what timber to go home to, but I know where I've been home to. I know when I was kidnapped the first time, I was taken from my home in the middle of the night, strapped to a motorcycle, and took over home to see. And then I was took back. My mom walked into school, grabbed the holder, and took me out. No one ever questioned her, nor ever knew where I was going until I was gone. That can't happen anymore today, because we lived in it, and I'm going to. Thank y'all for what you do. I appreciate it.
No, it's fine, I do not feel like a big respect. I will say, the parents that upset me, and upset me the most throughout my military career, are the parents that I never cared for. Parents that I cured of, become the voice of the county. Those are the parents that upset me. I don't get upset when a parent comes in and is very emotional about their child. Because you shouldn't be the number one protector and advocate for your child. And so I welcome you at all times. Times I might wish it, might be so bad. But I do not apologize for the way you feel about your child. Because I do appreciate, I appreciate how you use your child. Like I said, we have a number of parents in our community that really don't care about their kids. And those are the ones that upset me more than anything else. Yes, sir.
Okay, I just have two ideas I'd like to propose. One is, I have seen the TV screens in the office when I've signed in and whatnot. It shows one camera at a time, or a few seconds, moves to the next camera. And it takes a while to cycle all the way through. Now, a friend of mine told me that at Hill City, they have two big TV screens that's got four of the cameras showing at once. So that's eight camera views at one time. It would have been possibly easier to have noticed from the office staff, somebody lurking in the halls if there was more camera views at one time going.
Yes.
Is that something that might possibly be an easier, quick fix until we get the rest of the stuff into play?
Absolutely.
And then the other thing is about the early drop offs in the morning. I got something about this too, especially if you get like a parent's volunteer or something like that. Have somebody stand outside and pass a clipboard to the parents so they can sign their title. And they give it back, and then the parent never gets out of the car. The kids can go straight in, and the parent never has to, or any unwanted person would never have to enter the school. As a deeper thought again to cope with that situation.
Or you can take that before school away, because we don't have the staff to board it. We don't have the means to get more staff for it. It's not mandatory. I mean, how many parents depend on it, though? Everybody needs to jump on, what are we gonna do about that?
I'm not sure if y'all actually got in that program.
Well, I don't work here. My kids up in the school here, but there is a ton.
I don't work here, I'm only out.
I feel like you want.
But if you take that away, the kids will want to suffer.
Yeah, exactly.
That's, that's one of the challenges for my mother.
I mean, we don't want to open the door and let them in. So we're trying to figure a solution, take better steps.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I want to say that I'm in the school here myself, in kindergarten, offering seventh grade. I have six kids that are in the school here, and I wouldn't spend a day in here. Over the years, the basis in my life, my first gift was a year twenty-four years ago. So I have been to this school, okay, well, yeah, it's been a month or something here. But I honestly need improvements in this school. And anytime I ever come to this school, I can never get in to see a door, they're always locked. There's only one front door you can come in, usually the one that's right doesn't open, or right does, left doesn't. Now you have to buzz a buzzer to get in. Soon as I walk in that door, and I've been in it for forty something years, I still get told every time I lift a gate, somebody always signs in. It's safe every time, because I clocked out on the school, get in, buzz, but they could do it. And as far as the golf ball at the school, anytime I go to the office, get off this year down there, or last year down there, no, this year down there. There's always, for me, always somebody at the door with the signing sheet. And then usually it's Ms. Hazel standing at the door that goes toward the bathroom. So sometimes you can add each one whenever I come by here. And I've, I've seen...
Do you have a question?
I'm defending the school, and that's my privilege to do.
Oh, okay.
I'm just not the one complaining, so it's okay sometimes, and they say positive things. And I 110% support our principal. She's done a great job. We have cameras in here this year. Um, I, I'm just saying that people feel like our school's not secure enough. And the board is always running through agreements. I'm not disagreeing with that. And what happened with Florida, I'm not disagreeing with that. But I'm just saying, they have been many new agreements, and they have been many different safety issues that have placed...
There are acts, but wait, there's more than eight. Wait, wait.
Um, I don't, do they actually, do you take job applications here?
Do we take job applications, you see?
Yeah, do, are job applications taken? Because if they are, I think that there should be a policy change that they're not, so that...
We will die.
Okay, they're not taking on this school.
No.
Okay.
So if you put a sign on the door, immediately, no job application, because it is dislocation.
Most people say that.
We will, yes.
It wasn't clear to get a lock. Where is that?
The high school.
Um, taking, as a parent, taking consideration and steps forward. I felt better knowing that they got him off the premises. Doing what they're doing, taking his license information out, and getting him off the premises ASAP. Because not only, maybe not only, she may know what to do, but to tame someone, that can turn ugly real quick. But I felt better as a parent that they did the right thing, got the license. She investigated it and got them off the premises as soon as possible. I feel safer as a parent, my child being here, that they handled it the way they should.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Got a question specifically for the sheriff. Are all of your school resource officers equally trained? FTO trained specifically?
They are all certified, they are, I've got one that is still going through FTO, the Schedule 1 FTO.
So not every school resource officer is qualified to be on the road as a deputy?
I've got one that has not been through FTO.
Miss Kate Williams, correct?
I've got one that has not been through FTO.
Um, the last question I have for you, Sheriff, is former Dixie years offered to donate a free canine to be used on our school campuses, and you refused. Can you give me one?
First of all, I don't know about three, but I did have Mr. Tucker in the back. He agreed to donate another canine. The last one that was donated, I just recently retired. I chose to take a donation from our Explorer, or our, um... Yeah, or Auxiliary, and they purchased a canine that will be on the road very soon.
Thank you, Sheriff.
That canine will not be assigned back to the hospital like the last one, but will be on the road, available for uniform control, CIV, protas force, and load first force.
Any other questions?
My question...
Oh, I'm sorry.
My question is, after all this kids have been advised, so, like I said a little bit, when everybody's good to stop, they're not coming in. And then on the faculty, I'm just, I'm passing, well, I got you, and you had that, but he has to go like that, you know, to call. And then take time, and then go to that, and then, and then two years.
I've got one last question for you. Is there any abundant operating budget that can be immediately used to secure the entrance of this school? I'm talking about get a contractor in here and...
This is always wrong. I have somebody out, who's, uh, who's actually...
The funds are available.
Yes, and we're gonna, we're gonna save that very shortly.
Thank you.
But we gotta make sure we do it correctly because of the, uh, that's very, the school. Yes, sir.
Uh, do you have any further information about the vape incident in the high school cafeteria last week?
As we've had, is Mr. Wallace still here? Where is he? He left. Y'all, and this is another public story, like, it's been a couple hours on. In the last three weeks, four weeks, we've had, how many of them, some high school problems?
Probably twenty. Twenty.
And we've had, last week or two, we've had to call medical attention. We had to do that three a day, plus one last week. Vaping is a huge problem. One of the problems with vaping is that we have a number of parents that disagree with us on that and actually provide vapes and vapes for their kids. Uh, it is such a hard thing to detect. We're, if there's an incident that occurs, we do punish children for having vaping devices and vaping. But we also make it say that once they've done their punishment, and their punishment is over with, then they can return to regular activities at the school. Like, that's the big one that I've said, because some of the kids are coming back and doing extra regular activities after being punished. During the punishment, they cannot participate at all. But after the punishment, they're, they can. But I, I, not specifically, I don't know about any of your questions.
I just knew the one that happened the last week, that she had the seizure in the lunchroom. Which is she covering, or is she still...
Actually, uh, she is, she is back, I mean, she's, she has recovered. Uh, we didn't take her, we transported her to a hospital, and, uh...
Did she know that her vape juice was laced with that narcotic?
That I'm not sure. That I really don't know for sure. Vaping is, is a huge issue. And even if you look at the statistics out there from the, um, attorney, I don't know, our government person. Um, don't blame them, but, uh...
One of the big issues with vape is the, they, they, these kids are getting older. And a lot of those are now being classified as a Schedule 1 drug. And the problem is that we have no field test available to us to test them. So if we catch a student with a vape, all we see is the liquid. We don't know if it's the regular vape, or nicotine, or what's in it. So it's hard for us to charge that as a Schedule 1. We send that to the lab, but the turnaround with the lab is normally gonna be, you know, it could be three, four months because of the backlog and the crime. Once we determine that, you know, one of the big things out there right now is to take a boot. That's one of the things that we're seeing with the kids that have used this, came back after months as a Schedule 1 narcotic. Now, once that's determined as a Schedule 1 narcotic, the people that make this will change that chemical makeup just enough so when we send it to the lab, it's got a different chemical makeup. So now we have to go through that whole process again. And it's, it's a huge battle. And we're working very closely with several cases, one that you mentioned. We've got another one, you know, from probably two weeks prior to, that we're getting rushed. They rushed down in the crime lab, we get some results back. We're working closely with our detectives, as well as our protas force. And hopefully you guys can foresee some changes out in our community, or send you some, uh...
Yes, sir.
One other question. I just recently had looked at the beginning of the year. And no, I wasn't in a wheelchair anything, but this school is growing. With, we have more, the way this county's redistricted and everything. At some point in time, there might be a parent or a visitor who has a reason to be here that's gonna need to come into the school that isn't a wheelchair. They can come up these steps. And I understand making it so that way everybody has to go through that door and it's secure. Can we put some kind of speaker or phone down at that door? So then that way a staff personnel can manually walk to that door and test for them.
Yes.
Another thing I would mention, I know we're probably, I don't know where Gar was going to grab things. Anybody that would like to say after, if you did want to raise your hand, if you did want to ask a question in public, I will be here for the last person leaves. So if you want to meet with me or any staff, or if you want to talk about any issues you may have, I'll be glad to stay as long as you want to be here. And I'm sure Dr. Wilson will be here, something's saying, or at least he will have. He'll be here as long as you guys want to be here.
And I will tell you, uh, no, I have a perfect memory, but all the things you... And I will tell you, now, I don't have a perfect memory, but all the things you suggested, I do have a couple of people writing those down, so don't think I'm ignoring you, you say, yes, we can do that, and yes, we'll look at that, because we will, because they'll remind me what you said.
At least we got the newspapers here for you.
Oh, absolutely, yes, they'll, they'll remind me. Are there any other questions? Now, yes, sir.
I have one more. I, I, I'm sorry, I hope I didn't come off as too harsh on y'all, but I was kinda hot for coming in here, but I want to thank y'all for at least standing up here. I think there's probably another set of people that should be up here, because this guy should have never been on the streets, from what I can tell, from the criminal history, both in Florida and here, and, and there's probably some prosecutors and judges that need to be standing up there alongside you, maybe some parole board members, some other people, and at least thank you for standing up, because this could have been so much for us, and, and y'all did, at least coming here to, you know, take the heat, whereas other people probably should be here.
Well, again, we don't, we don't mind saying the heat when I'm hurt for the United States, and we realize from, from the incident, the attitude, the place things, we can do a little different, or we can make things better. Again, the biggest thing that I want you guys to understand is we do care, we care about the children, and we would be doing what we're doing. The deputies that we have that are here tonight, that are not here because they had to, you know, they care, and those that we have chosen to be in the schools, that work closely with your kids, it's not an assignment that we said, hey, Kevin, I want you to go work with the kids, it's, was something that we worked together, they went in, they put into the job, and they had a passion to work with those children, they went through mandate, and this is a job that they went and worked. So, you know, we've got some of the best people in our office, assigned to the schools, and again, it's not something that I said change, you know, you gotta go do it, or maybe change case a little bit. He worked in the schools before, and he has kids, but, you know, we take it serious, and we love what we do, we appreciate the opportunity we've had to work with your children, and with the schools, and with our school system. Carlson and I went over, not long ago, but Rick Tastertee is assigned to work closely with some of the school safety there at the dump, and we, we sat in a meeting, probably with, probably, what, fifteen, twenty other school systems, with the sheriffs, and with the school superintendents, talking about school safety. Guys, we had the best relationship, and some people look at that as not a good thing, but for us, we had the best relationship between the sheriff's office and the board of education, any county, anywhere around, you know, if we see a need, and we, we work together, we fit, and it's not all about having these deputies in the schools, it's about having, you know, when something happens, and they make that phone call, we drop everything we're doing to respond to these schools, whether it's having our criminal investigators respond to a block one, because some kid has made some breath to shoot up the school in the morning, we'll work on it, and I say we, myself, my chief deputy, my command staff, whatever it takes, we are gonna do whatever we have to do to make sure that our children are safe, these schools are safe. We work with our inmate work detail, to pick up trash, into the ballgames, to, you know, whatever we gotta do. If, if I'm working at the jail, and I have the heating air system go out, I don't, you know, I don't have to call a contractor somewhere to go fix my heating air system, I call a man sitting right down here that is in charge of maintenance for the school systems, he sends his folks over to help me. As long as we're working together and saving tax dollars, then we can put that money to use somewhere else to build, you know, something out here, to secure it over somewhere else. So, not, not very many citizens are fortunate to have a relationship we have, and I'm very thankful for Dr. Wilson, and the staff that he has, so, and we'll be here if you guys have anything to say.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask if the contractors that work with the resources are there who's backgrounded, like the ones that come to pick up the garbage, or the ones that do some maintenance?
Yes. That's part of the bidding process and the things that they, they know about. Well, you got one of the programs that I didn't tell you about, that, and I have to remind, our deputies a lot of the times, that deputies on patrol or anything, I would go to stop and come into his school and go have lunch with him, and we provide that for them also, just to have more deputies in the school, just to have students see deputies at different levels here at school, instead of, you know, come home, come see them in great lights sometimes at home on weekends, but just to build those relationships, and also to have more deputies in our school system. Any other questions? All right, thank you for coming.